Order the Planning Commission, Assistant Advisory Committee, City of Wilt for the regular meeting on Monday, October 12th, 2020, 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, will you please do a roll call?
Sure. Commissioners Todd Wilbur?
Here.
Commissioner Ellis?
Here.
Commissioner Klein, pastime. Sarah Barker?
Here.
Commissioner Chambers?
Here.
Commissioner Gattuso?
Here.
And Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the column, fine?
So will.
All in favor? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Column is so excused. Do I have a motion for the approval of minutes of the previous meeting?
Motion to approve.
And support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes from September 14th, our regular meeting, as-is? Please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Is there any public comments and communications concerning items not on the agenda? If it's on the agenda, obviously you will have a chance to speak. I'd like to welcome everybody then. Hold it does not a site plan review for 126 Southwest Street, which was tabled from our last meeting. Andy, you want to start us off?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a site plan review for 126 Southwest Street. This is on, next to the gas station, just on the south side of Main Street. The applicant is seeking to first construct a building on the property, and which ultimately would be used for a recreational marijuana micro business facility. And the applicant's intent, as he stated at the last meeting, would be to construct the building, then come back at a subsequent time and seek special land use approval for that building. So the applicant would head now with simply to construct the building and not occupy it yet, and then seek the special land use for the adult use marijuana at a later time. So at the last meeting, the planning commission indicated that they felt the site plan was missing in some information. Specifically, we talked about utilities, about landscaping, storm waters, and those kinds of things. So I reached out to the applicant, he's here tonight, and he can bring us up to speed a little bit. So we did update the site plan. They did indicate that there is water and sewer at the site, at the property line. There would be six box elders placed along the west street, kind of in between the parking lot and the parking spaces in the street. They have an engineer who is in Michigan, who had stamped this, and also indicated that storm water would be handled on-site. So if this is approved, or during the course of the approval at some stage, this would need to be reviewed to ensure that adequate, adequately sized storm sewer facilities are on-site, so that all the stormwater is handled on the property line. That's about it as far as the update goes. That addresses some of the issues. Like I said, we don't have an updated site plan. They didn't send a, kind of, the layout of the street, of West Street. This looks like it's from an old storm sewer schematic for protection repairs, and that was certainly prepared. So at this point, I guess the planning commission is going to determine if it's comfortable with what's been submitted, if there's additional items that need to be prepared. And now obviously, you can hear from the applicant, see where they're at, not sure if anything new has been deleted today. That's kind of where things are expected. So if you have a report that was in your package, that's the same report that we prepared for last one. So was the planning on watching through that again right now, or was it?
Thank you, the new site plan. I'm not sure where we got it.
Well, this is attached to the email, so that's just the design for the storm sewers on Southwest Street. The site plan here is the same one that you had in your package.
Well, we have not seen it.
That should have been attached to, I thought that was in the package that you didn't make it in, but this is something from West Street. So this does specifically pertain to this property. But it shows, yeah, so it shows the, yeah, so it shows the original layout.
Commissioners, any questions on this? Anything that stands out to everybody? If not, what I would, I guess what I would propose is that Andy go through the sections one by one again, and if we have questions, we raise them at that point, similar to what we normally do. Again, this one is a building only at this point, so we're not looking at uses. But I think it would be better if we go through point by point, like we have before, and if we have a question, we can either ask the applicant, or if it's already been answered, it's been answered. You already did.
So Bruce?
Yeah.
Their original request, here, we're going to stick with this, with the build-out for application for site plan review?
Right. Right. It's the same information we have, with a few facts new, and then as we get to a question, we'll ask the applicant if they have, you know, if they have any more information.
Yeah, this application, Marty, is a little bit different in that. So usually, there's a specific use that's proposed at the same time as the site plan. And so they certainly have a vision for what they want, for how they want the property to be used, but that requires a separate process. So this one, it's basically just for the building, and it wouldn't be occupied until they got some kind of land use authorization. If they changed their minds for some reason, and didn't want to pursue the micro business, they could, with zoning approval, probably from staff, just occupy the building if that use is permitted by law. So if they wanted to act like, just turn it into an office, or a retail store of some kind, they could do that with zoning approval. But anything that would require a special land use permit, you know, like commercial storage, or marijuana use, or stuff like that, they would have to come back in front of the planning commission to get the use authorized as well. So this wouldn't authorize them to occupy the building for any kind of purpose of this taking place.
I just want to just make sure that everybody here, that this is just going to be, all the questions we gave last time around, are going to be answered this time around.
And I think the easiest way to do that is just going through the process. And once we go through the process, we have our checklist of things that weren't answered last time. Either answer them, or say. Andy, you want to start with the site plan review?
Yep, so we have these standards that we go through pretty much every time we do this, for site plan review, so I'll just go one at a time. The first standard is that the use is proposed, will not adversely affect the public health safety or welfare. Uses and structures located around the site shall be planned to begin to account the property, size of the property, uses on adjacent property, and the relationship and size of buildings to the site. And that the site shall be developed so as not to impede the normally, normal and orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for use and community. So basically, what we're looking at here is that the use is proposed, will not adversely affect the public health safety or welfare, and that we're not going to compete or have any kind of negative impact on the development of surrounding properties. So this is a, this is a non-conforming person. We talked about this last time, so it's too narrow. So if you tried to create this part of it today, and the C3 did differ, we wouldn't let them. We wouldn't let anything, we wouldn't let anybody else. But since the lot exists, it's already zoned, it's C3, we can't do anything about that. So if the ordinance put we do, we allow for the development of that property, as long as you accept that. And that's a pretty typical approach that most communities do. So in this case, you know, constructing the building on the site for whatever purpose, I don't think, you know, impedes the development of our public safety and property, because it's a very flat parcel, and people can buy it or play with it. So it's not that big, there's not a lot of property or hill, or anything kind of unusual, there's not a lot of natural features on the site. It's pretty flat, it's open, it's kind of ready to be developed. So in my view of that standard, is met in our report from last one. We have a comment in here that utilities to the building are not shown on the site plan. So the applicant did, you know, think foremost of the, their true quarter inch water, the four inch sewer line coming off the site, or getting handle storm water up on the property, which it would certainly need to design and accommodate as they go through. So, you know, I think that this standard is met, Mr. Chairman, because, you know, I think overall, the spirit of that standard, kind of, would say how it's going to affect neighboring properties, and affect development in the area, and I feel like that would be, to that standard, would be satisfied in this case.
Commissioners?
Okay. Do you want to vote on these as we go, or do you want to go through the standards, and then come back and vote?
I have a little, we've already been through one, so let's vote on that. This would be the site plan review standard A. All in favor of accepting it as-is? Please say aye.
Aye.
Both same time? Acceptive?
Standard D, so that safe, convenient, and clean gesture, and well-defined vehicular and pedestrian circulation shall be provided for ingress and egress points, and it's a site, drives, streets, and other circulation routes shall be designed to promote safe and efficient traffic operations within the site, and have egress and ingress points. So in this case, I think they have the driveway, and maybe this is really the best spot they could put it in, which is as far as the south possible, so you're maximizing the distance between adjacent driveways, and maximizing the distance that you are from intersection with Main Street. So I think from a layout perspective, the site is sufficiently laid out, all the parking spaces are accessible, for example. They might, if they do proceed with the, with the marijuana one micro business, that they might need to put additional parking to the rear of the site, and loop around the south end of the property there, and add additional parking. That could be something that we could address at a future date, and before people talk about parking, we'll look at it more in a minute. But, you know, overall, from a layout and circulation perspective, I think as far as the sidewalk there, which would be completely, probably at your discretion, require that sidewalk attached to the front door, but we've done, of course, other properties that are on Main Street. And we've done that for the other marijuana facilities, but again, we're not positive that's what this is going to be, so we can always, you know, find a better, and address that when we're talking about land use authorization, or we could address it now. But as far as pedestrian and traffic circulation is concerned, as it's currently proposed, I think it's okay. But again, parking and circulation will depend a little bit on the land use, because some places are going to be a lot busier, a lot more intense than others. And so what they propose there, or what they, you know, apply for, that we have a conversation, that could affect, you know, how we perceive this a little bit.
The question I have is not so much the front part, the west side, but it's the back side. And there's only one door into the storage area, that back door there, and it's just a regular door. And I'm questioning, where do the traffic go to get into this? And I'm not calling it a warehouse, I'm calling it a storage area, purposely, but if, how are they going to get in and out of that area, and what's the traffic flow? And that's, that has not been addressed, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, you could certainly ask the applicant, you know, kind of how they plan on addressing that, if there's going to be a customer parking at the rear, like, you know, making sure there's a kind of pretty walkway that gets you from around the south side of the building into the front door. Obviously, you're not likely to have customers wanting to enter the rear. Also, how do you, utility purpose, for all that there is, also have buffering issues there on the outside, too. There's nothing there. So it becomes an issue.
James, do you want to address it, or?
Okay. If it becomes the marijuana.
As loud as you can, please.
Pardon me?
As loud as you can, please.
If it becomes the micro marijuana building that everyone is talking about, nobody can enter through the back door. There will have to be either a striped walkway, or a concrete walkway, from the side to the front entrance, because they all have to be monitored. Nobody can come back into the growing section. It has to be secure, the door has to be alarmed. If it is a storage unit for an office area, the only thing it would be used for would be a delivery. Everybody would, the only reason it would be there is because it is mandatory for a fire exit, for no other reason. So for a matter of life safety, that door is there.
So what about driving, are you planning on driving back there to the back?
If it becomes, if it becomes a micro growing center, then they will have to add additional parking, which can be added at the side, at the south side of the building, which there is sufficient room. We would have to then get a, an agreement to tie into the paving to the west side of the building, so people could egress coming back on that way. Since that parking lot actually turtle backs somewhat onto 126 Southwest Street, that is something that they would be rather easily attainable from the neighborhood.
I guess what I'm still confused on is if you have a storage area, how are you going to unload whatever items go into a storage area, and how are you going to?
It would only be a storage area.
Think out a storage area into a truck.
It would only be a storage area for the office space up front, not as a storage unit where you're thinking of a ten-by-twenty. What Todd Lehman has over on Main Street, it would not be that type of the storage facility.
Okay. But you still have to have some kind of egress to bring a truck in, or a van, or whatever you want, to get to the back to get into the.
It would only be a storage unit for the office spaces that are in the front of the building. It is not open to the public. Either way, it is only accessible from the office rooms, and that back door is only required because of life safety.
So, let me see if I can get this straight. You're saying then that all deliveries would come in the front door to access the storage area?
Correct.
Other than that back door, obviously, it has to have a pan, bar on it?
Correct.
For emergency egress?
Correct.
And then they're just going to go out into a grass area? Are you planning on doing a small concrete pad?
There will have to be, by law, there has to be a concrete pad for them to get out of, your five-by-five pad. After that, they're into a public space that allows them to exit the building safely. If they go with the micro micro business?
Correct, then you'll pay.
Then the payday will come around to the backside.
But here's my.
Still will not be able to enter that door, because state law will not allow you to enter that door. That door has to be security, monitored, and alarmed at all times.
Correct, but at one point or another, if, for future reference, be mindful, you're going to have water runoff, you're going to need storm water back in that back parking lot. Isn't it prudent to do that ahead of time, and avoid the cost of tearing up brand new everything to hook in? See what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying. And there is a reason why I told Andy that we would be addressing the storm water on-site. That reason is because of the adjacent areas, turtle backing their parking lots onto 126 Southwest Street, dumping 5,120 square feet of rooftop storm water onto 126 Southwest Street. There's going to have to be some cooperation between neighbors and my client, which will either tie in with a 12-inch storm onto Southwest Street, or we will have to get a state permit to tie in onto Main Street. But at this point in time, if they wish to turn around and change the flow of their water, that site is sufficient enough with a trench drain, and the groundwater that's there, the ground that is there, to absorb the saturation from the 1,200-square-foot building. And parking lot runoff, for as minimal as it is, goes into planting areas, and down into West Street, which will travel south to approximately 182 feet to a storm drain, which is the only storm drain in the first 300 feet off of Main Street heading south.
Did we get that information?
Pardon me?
Is that information from a company who has surveyed it, or is that information?
No, the storm drain is actually shown on the site utility plan that I got from DPW. It shows the location of the storm drain, it shows the location of the three-quarter inch water and four-inch sewer, both of which are to the property line. It went so in-depth, my conversation went so in-depth, that there will be no water meter fee for this building, because the city never refunded it to the prior owner, actually, two prior owners. So everything as far as the site utilities are concerned are either on this plan, which I got back late Saturday afternoon, and didn't get a chance to get to Andy today, or on the city site utility plans. And they're showing both the depth of the storm water, and the water, and the sanitary sewer lines. Since the sanitary sewer and the water actually are at the property line, we won't have to encroach on the city street at all. And the addressing of the storm water will have to be dealt with the neighbors. When they're turtle backing their paving onto this property, and they're washing 5,120 square foot of building surface onto the property, that has to be addressed between neighbors. And then it can come up to DPW and/or the state, depending on how everybody wants to address it.
Well, so to answer your question, Marty, I think, from our perspective, if you were to approve this, tonight, or for any, for any, one of the conditions would have to be that it's fit design and review, and figure out, I mean, I'm sure there are some storm water issues from, with the neighbors, and we'd want that addressed, and any storm water that they're going to generate, and their property will also need to be managed and dealt with in a way that's acceptable to the city, so.
Yeah, because Sean said it's turtle backing in, I was going to reiterate, so I know exactly what he's talking about, that's why I'm assuming, I wouldn't know the number of gallons of water, but I was assuming it was.
I can tell you the surface area, I can't tell you the gallons, unless you know what the flow is in a rainfall.
Right, you just touched on the dimensions of the building.
Yes. And you do not have a single storm drain on 1,004 West Main Street.
Is that the dollar?
In, no, no, that's Speedway. They own, they own the Speedway, and they own, there's a pizza place there, I'm not sure which one it is.
Little strip mall there.
Yes, and that's the building that is actually roof-surfaced off onto 126 Southwest Street.
All right, let's go this route then, guys, if it's okay with everybody. Let's say for B to accept it with those conditions, and B, you've got the various conditions there.
I would say that we must have storm water designed.
Is that fair to everybody? All in favor then of accepting B with those conditions? Please say aye.
Aye.
And both same time?
Item C, arrangement of public or private vehicular and pedestrian connection to existing or planned streets in the area shall be planned to provide a safe and efficient circulation system for traffic within the city. So this one, we already touched on this a little bit before, but the vehicular connections to existing streets in the area would be the one driveway onto Southwest Street, I think that's what I may watch the patient, the sidewalk would extend the property, pay attention to the property, as far as it is fully to save for that, while there's any other issues. Do you agree to that standard?
Commissioners, all, are there any questions first on C? All in favor then of accepting C as-is? Please say aye.
Aye.
Is accepted?
D, removal or alteration of significant natural features shall be restricted to those areas which are reasonably necessary to develop the site according to the requirements of the ordinance. Planning commission requires improved landscaping buffers and green belt to continuously maintain to ensure that those uses will be adequately buffered from one another and from surrounding public and private property. So as to the first part of this standard, there aren't any significant natural features on the site, it's, you know, flat, open, maybe a piece of land, so I don't have to worry about that. And then as far as approved landscaping is concerned, Mr. Vaughn mentioned that there are five?
Six box elders.
Six box elders that are planning to be placed along the west street right of way. So the ordinance allows for either a 10-foot-wide strip with trees, or a 5-foot-wide strip with some kind of 3-foot-tall continuous hedge on the ground, so that's what is purported to with that. Again, it's not shown on the plan, so if that was, if you accept that landscaping proposal, one of the conditions of that, as a condition of site plan approval, would be that you know, and updated, and site plan also shows landscaping on the site, and then you take a look at the status.
Commissioners, any questions? One question I have is on the, what side is it? West side? Pardon me, I'm on the east side.
East side.
Yes. There is absolutely, there's one tree there, and there are, there's housing beyond that. Again, it comes back to the question of where housing, storage area, traffic flows internally, and those kinds of things. And there's also a house, basically, right across, or kitty corner, I guess, on 26, across the street. So I'm concerned with the neighbors there. We have put buffering in on all of this, things that we've done over the years here. And I'm just concerned that there is really nothing that, I mean, to suffer. Commissioners, any thoughts on that?
Are you talking about where the property between where power lines currently running?
Yes.
In the apartment?
Yes.
I thought we discussed looking at putting a fence down that, down that line.
Yeah, it seems to me as though we need something there.
Well, we've been pretty consistent on all these guys, and any buildings going up to try to keep as much headlight, traffic, and noise coming back towards Main Street.
Car dealer has a fence all the way across.
Yeah.
Warehouse, or the old headwind warehouse, we importance that a little there, too.
If it was more to stop headlight traffic?
Exactly.
And noise?
Exactly.
Buffer it back.
Yes, yes. Even though there is a lot in between, we're just parking lot, but that doesn't stop the headlights, right? We don't have any control over that.
I think we've been asking for a six-foot privacy, right?
Yes, I think so.
Is that right, Andy?
Yes.
I think it is.
Yeah, it is. It is, and so where would you want this to be? So we can't run a six-foot privacy, that's like halfway up the street?
No.
That's the front yard, so you'd want to set it back at, I don't know, if you wanted to start at the building, then, because we're talking about going along the south property line, correct?
Yeah, maybe halfway between the sidewalk and the building.
The building, oh, halfway, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, so if you, so.
Bring.
Because if you're coming out of, if you're coming out of a parking spot?
Yep.
Your lights wouldn't be flashing right on that.
That person's house, across the parking lot there.
So we do have, you can't put your.
So we do have, you can't fix your fence in a front yard, so we could start it at whatever the front yard setback is, which is, I want to say 30 feet if I remember your search correctly, so we could start it at 130 feet off the front lot line. 35 feet, I'm sorry. So 35 feet off the front lot line, which would probably be, you know, kind of in the middle of this drive aisle here.
Right.
Right ahead west, maybe along the way to the rear property lines.
Yes.
And again, we don't know what's going to happen in the future there.
I think it will also add security there too, in the parking lots there, if it becomes what is going to, it's going to be a lot of port traffic, and you have to come in for the front, maybe it's all that stuff in the back, keeps them out there. Do you have any requests as far as that could be?
I don't know.
Six-foot tall privacy fence would be behind.
Sure.
Behind.
Yeah, car dealership is a perfect example. Got it. And. That one would be, what about the landscaping? Are you comfortable with the six box elders as opposed being reviewed?
I'm okay with that.
Yes.
Are you, or else? Does that take the place with the parking too? Landscaping offers to a parking.
So we don't require landscaping islands within parking lots unless the lot has at least 20 spaces in it. This only had six or seven, so then you have five.
Can you clarify more landscaping and lighting?
I thought I saw it somewhere, right? We'll see if it comes to it. Okay. All right, commissioners, everybody for D, site plan review standard D, with the addition of the box elders, the six box elders, and the addition of the wood privacy fence on the south side. Any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
And both same time? It is accepted under those conditions.
Okay. Item E, satisfactory assurance shall be provided with the requirement that all other applicable ordinance has posted requirements that this be a role in that. So again, this is kind of a general condition of a school that you put on everything that you review and decide on, and you would certainly do the same on.
Commissioners, all in favor of accepting E as written? Please say aye.
Aye.
It is accepted.
After the general purposes and spirit of this ordinance and the comprehensive plan of this to be a role shall be maintained. So, we write in here that the 2007 master plan shows this as, it's in one of the city has a couple of different mixed, future land use categories. This designation specifically is intended to commit a mixture of residential office and commercial title amuses, but not necessarily any downtown style building. Although not in a downtown style, but the plan knows these areas should still be trajectory-oriented. And as a general note, with the way that it's laid out, there is a slight alter to the content of it that would be maintained, so we do feel like that this is a general performance of the master plan for this downtown. Again, some of the land use, or some of the future land use discussion in the master plan is kind of a land use discussion, and it's hard to have that without knowing exactly what that even means, so it can be a little difficult to determine that as a thing.
Commissioners, on the standard F, any discussion? All in favor of accepting it as is? Please say aye.
Aye.
F is accepted.
Okay, so we, on the recommendations page, if the commission is inclined to approve the application, we have a series of conditions here that are the same from last month. So I think we can leave all of these, there are a few that I want to call your attention to. The file with required updated site plan, which sounds like Sean already got one, we'll take a look at that. Six landscaping shop in file with 4.26, so this would be, and we can add specifically six box elders if you want to, that's the control, plus the mask. So exterior lighting shop in file with 4.24 and 1903C, number eight, so this is one that I want to talk about, always to make sure that you understand. Their proposed building shall not be occupied by any use except for those permitted by right in the C3 general business district, unless special land use approval is received at a future date. A certificate of occupancy for the building shall not be granted until, since on compliance or special land use permit is obtained from the city. So this is where, you know, you would be able to kind of get a handle on the land use. So if it's permitted by right, it would fill out what's basically a zone compliance permit. If the city, and then if it's been a staff, it would just say, okay, this is fine. So if it's an office, if it's a retail building, that's something that we as staff could just approve, just like if a business moves from location A to location B, but it doesn't really change anything, it is moving. That happens sometimes, and so that doesn't come to, it doesn't need to differ, so we can address that as staff, and we would do the same thing. If what they ultimately want to do, and they like, the building is a micro business, or is, you know, some kind of commercial storage type facility, then that would require a special land use. As I hear, public hearing gets noticed, and we go through that process, and then you can, you would have to look again, but you would know what the land use is, you can talk in a lot more specificity about how many parking spaces are needed, you can dress more with specific concerns of, you know, marijuana, or storage, or retail, or whatever it is, you can kind of. This would allow the building to be constructed, but would not yet remain occupied. And then the last thing that I would add as a condition that we talked about would be with the applicant, we'll have to design stormwater management facilities and have the city approve those, that is mine as well. I know, Sean, you mentioned that you'd have an entity working with, would be able to design and stamp that.
Yep.
And take a look at it.
Okay. And how many conditions do you end up with on nine?
So that gives me 10, although, so number nine is the six box elders and the six-foot privacy fence.
Oh, okay.
They're wrapped in.
Yeah.
They're ended with number six. Yeah, that's kind of, that's part of number six, yeah, so we could just do that one too. So that would make nine conditions, okay?
I will then make a motion to approve the site plan review for 126 Southwest Avenue with the nine conditions that are. Do we have a second for that? And discussion? Amy, roll call both, please.
Commissioners, can I go over?
Yep.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank? Captain? Chair Parker?
Yes.
Commissioners Chamber, Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula?
Yes.
And Commissioner Schrader?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, you have your site plan review. Shane, you have your site plan review. Okay, and you're all set?
Can I give Andy a drawing?
Pardon?
Can I give Andy a drawing right now?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, we have a site plan review, special land use for Grand Rapids Gravel. And do we have a representative for Grand Rapids Gravel here? Come on up here and give us your name. Since we don't have a microphone working, you can just stand up in the front here, and or you can use the podium, either way, just give us your name, address, and, you know, since this is a rather involved project, I usually give them five minutes, but if you need a few more, that's fine. We're just looking for an overview of which market.
James Dykma, Grand Rapids Gravel, 2728 trees up west Wyoming. Basically, we have a piece of property off of Bowes Road there that we've owned for twice in time now, north of the river, and we are looking to have a gravel mining operation there. In the timeframe, about 10 years, give or take, due to market conditions and how long product goes and the boom of the economy and any unperceived recession. After the gravel mining operation, we create a roughly 22 to 24 acre lake, anywhere from 12 to 14 foot deep, that would be surrounded by either condos or single-family homes, depending on the market, in 10 years from now, right there off Bowes Road. The mining operation would feed both our concrete operations, already mixed concrete in the west Michigan area, as well as any other aggregate uses such as landscapers and such could come in and buy their sand, their small rock, their crushed rock, from us directly, like other operations here in the city and whole township. Pretty, I agree on this, very complex project, but that's the most simple overview I can give. I think it's easier for I to go through and answer questions as they kind of come up.
Thanks, James. Well, I will, I will, I guess, warn you, and commissioners, that it is, obviously, there's quite a bit here. And we probably will table it as we get more knowledge and things that I'm sure is my suggestion, so it very well may get tabled to next month or until we figure it out. Andy, you want to start?
Sure. So yeah, this is probably the longest staff report you've seen for me for a while, but that's okay. So this is a 63, almost 64 acre parcel, I think, on the river, so it's very, very southwest former city, basically, but it's up right against the river, it's zone, it doesn't feel, it's been that way for a long time. Mr. Dykma mentioned, it's owned by Grand Rapids Gravel for years and years, and years that we've known for quite a while, this application is going to walk in the middle of something, so. So the proposal here is to basically, it is 22 acre lake and settling material. There are a number of methods and other things that would be going on on the property in addition to that, that have been coming to be documented now. So there's only a couple districts in the city where this kind of activity is allowed, it's primarily just industrial, and this rivers edge district that we have, anything that's close down to the river, basically, the whole town space is going to district, so we would allow this, and that's pretty much it. We did walk through, and our report on page two, just kind of the overall completeness of the seminal, the site plan is generally complete. There are a couple things that we're missing, perhaps most notably just like the setbacks for the 50-foot setback for cutting and excavating and things like that, and then a few other things, but again, a lot of it doesn't really, it's not really, it doesn't really matter, you know, there's not a lot of, you know, there aren't many buildings on the side of the road. It might be helpful to have a map to kind of inventory some of the existing vegetation on the site, so if my commission is interested, concerned with screening and kind of having that 50-foot setback be like a undisturbed area that isn't touched to help kind of isolate this a bit, have it, you know, not be less noticeable through days of protection from over the road. That sort of innocent information maybe helps with you. Overall, the site plan is fairly complete. In, you know, 17.04C, and that is in the special land use chapter, where we have additional information to be asked for, only what they're asking for is a mining operation. So they ask for a setback, they ask for a written plan containing the methods of mining, moving, storing, processing, loading, and transporting the natural resources on and from the site. Copies of any permits or applications, court permits issued by or on file with legal, and any other federal, state, county permits, et cetera. So in this case, they didn't provide like a link to written narrative, like we sometimes see for these kinds of operations, but in view, on the site plan, they talked about some of the equipment that'll be on the site, and the site plan shows where the main facilities will be located, where the stockpiles will be, where the equipment will be, you know, where the washers, and where the size and screen, and things like that. So they provide all that kind of information to you. And then the last thing that the ordinance requires is what we call an end-use plan. And so with these mining operations, there's always a question, so once you're done, what are you going to do with it? We don't want someone to mine a piece of property and then just, you know, you extract all of the resources, and you just walk away and leave, right? You want this to be, at a minimum, you want the property to be usable by either this owner or a subsequent owner at the end of the project. In the past, Grand Rapids Gravel has done residential developments around their sites, and I think we talked about this last month. At the West River and North Line Drive and the Rockford area, there's a huge mining operation there, they've got other ones there, but they have those condos that kind of ran those lakes, but they're mainly mixed, where they're mined lakes that are created. So that kind of gives you an idea for what's proposed, and on the site plan, you can see on the end-use plan, that is what's shown here too, so there's going to be, what's proposed now is a series of two-unit condos, it could be like walkout-style development, so it appears that in the future, this is proposed at this point, kind of to have a little private drive servicing at the number of two-unit condo buildings, so it'll basically become residential development, we're looking at, that is to say, at the same time, they're not wanting to do this, so if you approve at some point this operation, that doesn't automatically approve the housing development at some point, in the future, market conditions will change, maybe decide they don't want to do that anymore, it's all to somebody else, you might have a totally different plan for the property. We don't know, but they have, at this point, put together a, you know, what seems to be a logical plan for using the property at the end of this. The property would have to be rezoned and the mining operation to allow for this, right now it's on industrial, which doesn't allow for certain housing. So 10 years from now, if they're about wrapping it up, then that would be an appropriate time to admit, to see, I'll have to rezone the property to some appropriate residential district and then proceed from there. It's acceptable, of course, approved through zoning, but that's a long ways down the line, so I'm not going to get into too many details over the end-use plan, other than knowing that there is a plan for what they're doing there. So.
We don't need to look at these items.
Yeah, so what we do in the zoning ordinance is it just requires a sketch plan, so it does a fairly, you know, rough sketch of what's going to be there. We don't require, for example, a fully engineered event.